We also have audio/video recording for all of our interviews, which is in the interview room. It's in the front lobby where the phones are and also in the interior front lobby. We've had this system in here since the building was done in 2003. It was updated, I think, in 2012. And like with all technology, it wears out. We have filled our memory space in it. And like with technology, a lot of it's not being supported anymore, and we are on life support with it. If it crashes, we will not be able to recover any of the data that we have, our interviews that we have on there or any of that. So it's a... I had put it in the budget for this coming year, but Audrey has to make decisions, and I'd rather have a cruiser than a camera system, but unfortunately, I need both. And this will upgrade the cameras as well. So any questions you have, I can probably answer them.
Let's just go over the total proposal, what's being recommended here in terms of major components and total costs.
When they did the sound system in our last upgrade, that is still good, so we don't have to do that. The last upgrade was around $27,000. The price of the cameras and stuff have come way down. We are going to reuse our audio system that records. We're going to add a couple of cameras on doors that we don't have cameras on right now. It is a public safety building. We should have every door and spaces that... I think we're going to put one in the back bay in the fire department. There's also one door on the back that doesn't have a camera at this point. When we bring somebody in who's been arrested, they are on film from the time they get out of the cruiser, when they enter the building, when they go into the intoxicilizer room, that's audio/video recorded. We are mandated by law to record all major crimes interviews, and we do that in our... either in our conference room or in the booking room. So that's basically what we're replacing is the hard drives, adding some additional cameras, upgrading the cameras. I did a similar upgrade in Rockport. Rockport didn't have any cameras around the building. And the difference in the camera system that Seacoast is proposing is exactly what I put in over in Rockport. We're doing a little bigger scale. The quality of the video since we've upgraded the last time is just unbelievable. So the lieutenant and Jeff, I think, go in every morning and look at the server, hoping that it hasn't crashed overnight. But they... We're going to be in a pickle if it does, because we have many current cases that we have video on that's evidentiary in nature.
Total cost?
Total cost is $12,489.38.
$13,000.
Yeah, and there's also a $65 per month that we'd want to add in there as well. New systems, we're going to be calling them quite a bit until everybody gets familiar with it. And the price per hour to come in is for them to do that.
Questions? Audrey, were we budgeted for this?
No, so this would... We're proposing that this would come from the Public Safety Reserve, and there's currently $65,000 in that account.
Okay. Questions, board. Allison, you had your hand up.
So is this all exclusively interior?
Interior, exterior.
Just around the public safety building?
Yep.
Where's the wash bay?
That is the fire department bay in the very back where they keep the...
Okay, yeah, yeah. Does this allow us to see anything like in the surrounding area, or is it really just...
No, it pretty much covers just... We wanted... When we put that in there, it was to cover the doors, basically. Somebody coming in falls down, we've got that on video. The other thing that we want to make sure is because we don't staff 24 hours in the administrative assistant, somebody coming in there to make a 911 call or call dispatch, we have that on film. If somebody gets chased in there, domestic say, that's all recorded.
Does that ever happen?
We have used that many times to go back and look at stuff. Somebody said somebody said something to them, and we were able to pull the video up. I can't think of a time right off the top of my head, but I know people come in there in a panicked state, and, you know, it's good to have that.
Oh, yeah.
And I will... I will give Knox County dispatch access to those cameras, so they'll be able to pull them up at their office in case something like that happens.
I really... Well, that's one of the things I just like most about the new system, where you go in there and you feel like, oh, I'm at the police station. I'm going to be able to talk to somebody, and you're like, whoa, which phone? And then it's just so impersonal.
Well, it's not the whole office that has recording.
Oh, I don't have a problem with the recording. I'm just... It's just so, you know, impersonal, but...
Unfortunately, that's the world we live in.
Maybe it will make it a little bit nicer to think if I am talking to the Knox County people, they'll be able to see me in there?
If you're on that phone...
Yeah.
Then they will be able to see you. I've just got to give them a link to the cameras.
Is there any thought about expanding the surveillance system to other parts of town? It just seems like, wow, we have every single footstep that anybody ever takes in the public safety building, well documented, yet we have no idea who's vandalizing the public bathrooms.
I'm not going to ask you to put cameras on the bathrooms. If you want to do that as a board, be my guest.
But I'm just wondering, like, as a tool for solving crimes, is there... I mean, we have crimes that we haven't been able to solve.
Have you ever been to England?
To England?
Yeah.
Not since I was a baby, actually, but...
But that's why it's becoming the...
You can't get anywhere in London.
You can actually take the subway at like, or the tube at 2:00 a.m. You can be a single woman taking the tube at 2:00 a.m. Nobody's going to touch you.
You were recorded everywhere in London.
Recorded everywhere. Is this an argument for or against?
Well...
No issues with cameras at all. I mean, to put them all over town, it really helps us.
You like them.
Oh, yeah.
No, so the issue for me is not having cameras. It's the issues around the privacy and making sure that we don't use, when we collect video footage in a public safety or place. That's covered by like different laws than the public on the streets and things like that. So, I mean, I don't want to see cameras becoming this.
Mark, we haven't asked to expand that, but we probably will have space on there if...
You add cameras?
Say the skate park wanted to put cameras up there. Technology, you'd have to probably fiber optic down to the PD, but I'd probably get space on there to add a camera or two.
My question, the information, the files that you get, do you keep them in-house? Do they go and stay off the cloud so they're really secure?
Stay in-house. We have an in-house server for that.
Okay, so they don't go out in the cloud, so they can't... Very secure.
That's why we're getting more terabytes, trigabytes.
And terabyte, it looks like, yeah.
Other comments?
So what kind of casual conversations is it recording? Like when you go in there and just chatting with Jeff Sukford, Dr. Bern Torment?
If you go in and you're talking to Jeff, that's recorded, because that's audio/video in that lobby there. Once you go into the interior, nothing is recorded unless you go into the conference room or back in the booking room.
Now, what are the rules about being able to use any of that or just privacy rules about or codes of conduct in terms of, okay, if you've seen somebody having a conversation or heard somebody having a conversation on their... More just like the gossip train of like, oh, yeah, I heard those two talking about this.
We don't review that unless there is an issue. It sits in there.
It's not like a...
We don't go in every morning and see who came into the lobby. No.
But then there are like rules about that or...
You're in a public safety building. It's public. So Maine is a one consenting party state.
Right.
We consent to the people who come in there being recorded, so.
Makes it a little easier.
Yep.
Other questions?
Do we have any body cams?
We do not at this point, and I'm waiting for more federal funding to come in for that. Couple of different things we're looking at. It's very expensive. I know Rockland just did a five-year plan, full deployment, which is what we would do here. Don't quote me, but I think it was in the area of $120,000. We do have cameras in our cruisers, which have remote mics that can record up to 1,000 feet. So we are getting those interviews. When we go to a domestic, the officers hit that when they go inside, so they are getting audio.
Oh, my gosh.
It would be great to have body cameras. I just... It's going to be a major expense when we do it, so if we can secure federal funding for it... And there was a real big push to do that a while ago. It's kind of slowed a little, but when I see that and we can do it, then that's what I'll be looking at, is federal grant funding for it.
Mark? Go ahead, Allison.
You can hear people 1,000 feet away by just pushing a button?
Yeah.
What kind of rules are there about using that? I'm not suggesting that they do that, but it would just be...
We turn those on for crime-type things, domestics, burglaries in progress, things like that. It's not something they turn on automatically when they get out of the car just to go have a conversation with somebody. If we're doing an investigation, that's when it'll come on.
Oh, it doesn't... It's only like the microphone is on them?
The microphone is on the officer in a little pack.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, body cameras, I will tell you, body cameras record all the time when they're on. Even if they don't push it, they have a feature that you can go and play back, so.
And that's the expense, really, is the data of...
Oh, yeah.
The amount of storage data you have to have.
And to do it and do it right, you know, we don't share guns. You need to do full deployment with body cameras, because it's assigned to the officer. That officer's responsible for that camera. It goes in, and there's no, well, this person had it, and the battery went dead. No, it's...
Is the order of magnitude hundreds of thousands of dollars or...
What's that?
What's the order of magnitude for a system like that for our...
Body cameras?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you did a five-year full deployment, you're looking $120,000 anyway.
That's what I figure.
Is it just the money that's holding you back? Do you think it's generally a positive thing?
Oh, I think it's... I think in this day and age, we need every advantage we have. The more video we have in our field, the better.
It's also... I mean, again, it's another one. Increase accountability and transparency in it, that's...
The cruiser cameras themselves cut down our court time greatly. Somebody may go hire an attorney and tell a great story, and then we prevent... We present the evidence by the cameras, and most of those get bled out.
Yeah. Yep.
Cool. Should we vote on this?
Yes, we need a motion to approve or disapprove.
I will make a motion that we approve the amount of $12,489.38.
You would not exceed $14,000, because that adds in the...
$65 per month.
Yeah, for 12 months.
Do we have that amount there somewhere?
Just not to exceed $14,000 will cover you.
Okay, not to exceed $14,000 for the new security system for the public safety building.
My second.
Motion made in second discussion.
Did you read it right?
Ray, is your discussion point?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
And just really for your information.
Sure. Ray Andresson, Cove Road, Camden. Will these cameras be recording everybody that comes in to vote since that building is used for elections? And is there any state statutes regarding that?
I don't believe there's any state statute on that, but it does record the front of the fire station across the front of the doors, and it records the back bay. I don't think there's... There may be one towards the back. I'd have to double-check on that, but no, I don't.
I'm more concerned with any state statutes than I... That's a good question, Ray.
Again, I think that falls under its public safety building.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? All's in favor? Or is there... Thank you, Randy.
That was easy.
Good to see you.
We look forward to the videos on Channel 13.
Right. The third item on our action list is approval of a snowball suggested surplus, use of surplus or expenditures. Want to bring Beth on? I can do it.
No, I can absolutely do it. So, 31.
There's Beth.
I don't know why...
Hello, everyone.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, she's there. No problem. Beth, can you take us through this discussion about, I guess it's about compressors for the memo you wrote?
Yes, sure. So as many of you know, last fall, we had to scramble for the three rental units that we normally get from Tras Decro out of Scarborough. The construction industry, as well as Bath Iron Works, get units from this company, and a lot of the units didn't come back in in the winter like they normally do. So we had to scramble and find two, which we had to go to New York, Buffalo, New York, to find two that would work for us. They did have diesel compressors, but we didn't really want to spend the money on the fuel. We wanted them to be electric. That's what we have used in the past. So anyway, our expenses were way up, and given that we have a surplus from this past season, we have an opportunity to purchase two used units from this same company. One of the units is actually a unit that we've rented for the past few seasons, so we know the machine. The other one is a 2013 Solair. But this gives us the opportunity to get away from the unknown, really. We've been told it's going to be the same this year, that people are going to be scrambling for rental units. And we've been told by the company that we need to decide if we want to purchase these soon, because other ski areas are looking to purchase them underneath us. So not that I'm putting that pressure on you folks at all, but this is an opportunity for us. It will basically pay for itself in probably two seasons, if not just about two and a half seasons. And so does anyone have any questions about the compressors?
First of all, just so everybody understands, there's total of four, is that correct? We use four, is that right or not?
We've rented... We've rented three in the past, and we own one. In 2016, we bought a used 2012 Solair for $51,000.
Okay, so but right now, we rent three and we own one. And the proposal is to own total of three and rent one more.
Correct.
So you're still going to be renting?
We feel we can do what we need to with three. We did resurrect two fan guns that weren't in use this past season, so that's a huge help for us to make a massive amount of snow in a small amount of time, so.
Mark, you have a question?
My question, Beth, obviously, they've been... I assume they've been reconditioned or something. What's the lifespan of these compressors?
Well, they're like any machine. As long as they're maintained well, they're going to last you a long time. We are fortunate that we have a great couple of mechanics on staff. Plus, this company, Tras Decro, will come and do an annual maintenance job on these machines for us to make sure they're up to par.
Yeah, I think the difference, Mark.
I'm sorry. This is not... I mean, I was going to ask this question, Mark, so I'm happy you raised it. I think that when we look at equipment purchase at the select board, we should have a spreadsheet that tells you the annual maintenance. It's not just a one-time cost. That's what we do for every piece of equipment in any business. So I just have a purchase price. You're not telling me how long this machine is expected to be in service. Is it five years or 20? I mean, we need that kind of data. So I'm a bit, you know, these are important purchases, and I don't feel like I have the information that I'm used to see, you know, when I purchase any type of equipment for a business.
Right. Well, I agree with you, Sophie. I think another factor here is, well, and we just discussed a minute ago, Beth, I don't know if you heard, we're going to try to do the snowball budget review on the ninth. Did you hear that? I'm not sure if you heard it or not, because we had to waste water and snowball at the same time. It seems to me we should be looking at the whole enchilada, not just at one piece at a time, because I don't know where that stands yet.
Well, I mean, Beth can... What I understand, there's a bit of a sense of urgency around this, where there are other buyers. So I mean, it's... I'm not saying that that's... They're necessarily going to be sold right away, but I think that Beth has communicated to me that it's certainly a risk, so.
Mark, go ahead.
This answers a question in reading that the information that's in the packet. It answers a question that I've been asked, is why did the snowball wait so long in the winter to start making snow? And it's obviously because we didn't have the compressors. And that maybe, again, the snow, you know, for the last bunch of years, the snow we've been making has been the lifeblood for skiing at the snowball, especially for the December Christmas holiday and January. It's really important. So it's a tough call to spend this much money, but I understand the viability of the snowball depends on this kind of support.
Well, I mean, if... You have your hand up now?
I...
Okay. It's $100,000, and that's eating up almost all of the money. Almost all of the money. I believe we're about in the order of magnitude of $120,000, $130,000. It was black this year from the operation of the snowball, in order magnitude. So there'll be something left over, but is this where we want to spend that money from too? It's a financing thing.
Well, I think another thing to consider is that we did receive that $408,000 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant...
Right.
Which we need to match...
Right.
50/50. So we need to come up with $408,000 worth of match. Coastal Mountain Land Trust was bundled into our applications, so they're providing a portion of that match. And we're fairly certain, and again, if you want to wait until we have a final answer on that, we're asking...
A final answer on what?
We're asking the grant administrator.
Oh, you're asking if we can apply that?
If we can apply this as match to that grant, because that grant was primarily for snowmaking.
Yep, right.
And to be able to say that this is an important component of snowmaking would go a long way towards it. And so, and also, just to... We have a three-year period to come up with a match, and that would just knock off a large chunk of it this financial year, so that we don't need to worry about coming up with all of it in the next two years.
And how long do you think it'd take to get an answer from that granting agency?
I would say that they've been very responsive, so we just floated the question with them, I'd say, over the last couple of weeks, and they've sent us the paperwork that... It's all just paperwork at this point, so I don't think it's going to be an issue. But we don't have a... I just don't want to say that we have a definitive answer, because we don't.
I think there's that element is another element. I said, looking at... We're so fortunate, thanks to Beth and company's hard work and doing a good job out there. We have the public going to the facility, spending money there. We have this, we'll call it surplus, but it's really a net over budget. But to take, you know, 80% of it for this one expenditure, we haven't reviewed the budget yet, gives me a little heartburn. And also, Beth, isn't there any way we can have reservation on a rental for an entity saying, we'll give you a deposit to rent this thing for a certain month? They won't do that? Why not?
Rental or purchase?
Normally, it's a rental agreement. It is not a contract. It's a rental agreement, and they didn't get... There was a monopoly on the units, and the units didn't come in, or come back. Let's just say that.
So the agreement is worthless.
Yep. But we were in the same boat as all the other ski areas. I know several ski areas went with diesel, and they spent all kinds of money, and it was very loud and obnoxious, and they got a lot of complaints.
Is there a warranty or something with it?
Well, they're used, don't forget.
They're used, right?
I'm asking. I mean, it just seems like just a massive amount of money to spend on something that we don't know, but I'm not...
Well, I guess to give you a little bit of context behind it, Beth, for the compressor that we do own, that was purchased new, wasn't it?
No, we got it used. It's a 2012, same exact unit for $51,000.
Yeah.
2016.
Yeah, I don't think the price is outlandish at all. I think it's just the total cost to what Sophie said. One, two, we need to get an answer on the grant. I think we should know that. But I'm not even convinced we should use the grant for that, you know?
Can we talk more about the grant?
That's not an option. The grant is locked in for snowmaking.
We need just the match portion.
Yes.
But we wanted to spend our match portion if we needed to... If, I don't know, if the $400,000 that the grant is giving us wasn't enough to cover the snowmaking improvements, we might be taking out of our funds for that too, right?
No.
No? Who's going to pay for it?
We have three years, right?
We have three years.
Three years.
Three years what?
To come up with match.
To go up with the match. We don't have to come up with...
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is if the grant is $400,000, rough numbers, we have to match $400,000. If we take this money out of that money that's the $400,000 for the match, then we have less money to spend on the project.
They wouldn't look at it that way. That's... Yeah, we have to just come up with a matching contribution to the project. We can exceed that. So if we decide as we're going through that project, we need to budget more funds because...
I see.
For whatever reason.
Because the $400,000 is being exceeded.
Yeah, they don't... I mean, exceeding your matching contribution is a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Well, we should confirm that, I think, and I think we should... I believe we should take a look at the whole budget and make sure we're doing it. We're only talking about two weeks.
But also, I mean, to me, I always see requests for one piece of equipment. I have no idea of the overall...
That's my point.
...age of the equipment we have there, and over the next five years, what do we need to replace? And so it's hard for me to make a decision on this, because it's a very discreet ask, you know? It's two compressors, but what does it mean in the whole equipment we have at the snowball? So...
Yeah, it's a piece of the pie.
Sorry. Sorry, Beth.
And I think it would be nice if we... Beth, if we had a little time between now and the ninth, I guess it is, to discuss future... You must see future needs for the... Not this year, but you know, for the... As we go forward with the snowball for repairs, additions, or improvements. We should be discussing that at the same time on the ninth. Mark?
Beth, how long do we have until you have to give them an answer? How long, basically, are these Rs until we tell them we're not sure yet?
Who knows? I told them that we would be going to the board. They said they will definitely not be able to wait until July 1st, like our normal budget cycle, so...
So can we wait until... Because we'll have our full budget, what, in two weeks?
Well, May 9th, when we're proposing a workshop, and May 10th, I would hope we would be able to come and approve in a select board meeting the budget.
Yeah, so can you wait till May 10th for this decision?
I can definitely ask them, but again, if it gets taken out from underneath us, we'll be back at the drawing board, and hopefully we'll have compressors to make snow.
It's a risk, but I think we should do it.
Is there... I guess I also don't have very much information about the snowmaking grant. Was there something... Usually with a grant, we would have had to say, this is our snowmaking plan, and this is why we need money.
Yeah, we have a whole engineer.
And this is what... So we must have certain things written down that make the case for having some sort of a plan.
Yeah.
We have a big plan. We have a big plan. I'm happy to send it to you.
So, maybe just things like that would be.
That's been around for a while. Beth's had that for a while.
But we don't, I don't know if it's something I just haven't been paying attention in meetings, but it doesn't sound familiar to me.
I don't think you've had it before.
No, I don't think so.
So, basically, the one piece of information we need is whether it fits in the grant, right?
Well, I, I mean.
We're, we're waiting for an answer from.
I would say that's one, that's one factor because of, you know, how advantageous that would be for knocking off at least a third of the match that we need to come up with. But I think that also looking at this in, in isolation in, in regards to what we need for snowmaking and, you know, sort of the, the issue that we had this, because I think Beth is just trying to make sure that she isn't facing the same issue in December of this coming year that she was.
I would do the same thing if I was in Beth's shoes, but it's our, it's us to look at the, the bigger picture of the snowball, where it's going, how it's going. Basically, a comment that was made during the Budget Committee meetings was developing a plan for the future of the snowball. I think we have to discuss that too at some point in time.
Yes, but.
As we do with the, at the Sea Rise and the Harbor, you know, the snowball, unfortunately, in the warming climate and et cetera, we need to address that here too. But, but more importantly, I think to the practical reality, and that is, I think Beth and company have a good handle on other elements we may need to think about investing to keep it alive and well for as long as it can exist.
And I don't disagree with you, Bob, but at the same time, I feel that there is a level of urgency that Beth is, is sharing with us, and I'm wondering if we could not vote conditionally on authorizing the purchases once we get the green light from the agency so that, so that Beth is not held up.
Well, she'll be held up getting an answer from the granting agency. It's the same thing, and I don't, I don't know if you'll have it by May 9th or not. I have no idea.
I mean, I can't answer that question either.
I know you can't. That's why I think the contingency is probably, well, in my opinion, not worth it.
So, if we were to, it seems like there's just an incredible demand for these items. Should we purchase them and then need to reevaluate? It seems like they would be very easy to offload.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, like, what would be the circumstance where it would have been a big mistake to do this? I'm trying to.
When the construction, this construction world turns, and it always does, down, then, then the demand for them will not be as high. At some point in time, we don't know when that will be. So, you can't, you can't make all projections of what you know today. That doesn't work in construction.
But in any case, we need compressors to make snow.
Yes.
So, one way or the other, we need to buy, to either buy or rent compressors. So, the, so the question, so the question we're really asking ourselves is, should we buy compressor that would last 20 years if we only have 10 years of snow, right? That's the question. Or keep on renting for 10 years?
No, it, no, I, I think.
I just don't understand why we don't go ahead and authorize this purchase, because we're going to need those compressors regardless.
I think it's a long-term plan. It's sort of a, let's, because we know that we need a bigger plan, and we often feel that we're in a situation of making decisions without having it, you know, the full picture that, that at some point you have to say, nope, we're not going to do this anymore until we have a better plan. And I think it's almost like a leverage thing, but.
But by, but by May 9th, we won't have this long-term plan. This long-term plan is going to take us months. So.
I assume.
So, we're, we're putting on hold a purchase that, that putting it on hold can put us in a really, in a bind by July 1st if Beth doesn't.
I think, I think the thing that Beth also said here that's really important is, with the rates for compressors going as they are right now, this could pay itself off in two and a half years. So, we will definitely still be making snow in two and a half years. This will help us have a healthier snowball. It'll help her get the snow earlier when we really need it, when, when we've had trouble. I think it makes sense to, you know, do it, do it today and.
I just, I, my, my, from my perspective, I've always blanched against situations where you're facing an expenditure because you, you have a gun to your head. And I, I don't agree with it. I, I think that that's a, and Beth's been very honest about not being able to say it's absolutely, you know, guaranteed. We would lose it if we don't decide tonight. But on the other hand, I, I just have this feeling, I don't know what else is lurking out there. And I think we should discuss that during the budget workshop to find out. There's nothing more than this in the near term. And by near term, I mean two or three years.
And, and honestly, I don't think Beth or I can answer that question, because look at what happened with the groomer. You know, I mean.
Groomer.
It, it broke and we needed to fix it.
Fix the tracks.
And it cost how much? Yeah.
Something we already had to deal with.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, there were, I think, it was an expensive year at the snowball. There was a number of large expenses that weren't anticipated. I mean, it's an expensive facility to maintain. We have a lot of expensive equipment out there.
It is, but we have to have a track record of what it's cost us on average per year for maintenance of equipment.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm, I'm just saying that.
Is that in the budget, Audrey? That's what I want to see. Is that?
There are certain things that we can put in the budget. There are certain things we can plan for, but there's a lot of other things that we just can't, like the beavers and the mice and all, you know, all of the other things that we've dealt with over the last three years. I mean.
Yeah, when you're developing a budget, you develop what you, on average, we spend at maintenance. You have a contingency on the budget also for covering some of the things on average you've seen that have happened that you didn't anticipate.
Right. I, I understand that, and that's, yes, that's what we've done, but I guess what we're asking for, it's a known now. It's a known to us that we're going to have issues finding a compressor come fall. So, I think that, you know, we're just trying to remove one of the factors that's a known so that we can sort of go into the year with at least one issue that's been addressed and solved.
And the one, the one other thing about it is, this year, we have the money to purchase them.
Yeah, that, that's, you know, that's, that doesn't, no, I, I don't, I, my point I made earlier was.
I mean, I can see why that wouldn't necessarily be comforting to you all, because I could come to you tomorrow and say, well, a groomer's broken and we, we're going to need another.
It's not just.
I mean, there's just so much.
It's not just that, Audrey. Philosophically, what we should, what we've talked about doing is taking the annual surplus, if there is anything, there has been the last two years, and putting some of that aside for the quote rainy day, when something happens.
I understand, Bob, but what, that's what we've done, and I've brought you a lot of rainy day stuff, is what I'm saying.
Hmm.
That was completely unanticipated.
Well, again, this should, that should be in the contingency.
Well, it was, Bob, but we spent it because we had rain.
The contingency was adequate?
Yes, because we were able to cover the compressors that, you know, the extra expense for, we were able to cover that $40,000 expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
We were able to cover the cost of repairing that groomer, which, what was that, Beth?
50.
50.
57, yeah.
And we were also able to cover the cost of relocating the magic carpet and, yeah, and installing the two vehicle.
The magic carpet came out of the general fund.
No, that was the contingency, or sorry, surplus.
One of the items being modified out there came out of the general fund. What was that? We took money out of the general fund, about $50,000.
Oh, that was, maybe actually that was the groomer.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, this gets to would be a little, a little bit of a moving target to me in terms of why, so the contingency did not cover anywhere near close.
I see what you're saying, Bob, but again, I can't make money out of thin air. We know that we have X amount of contingency, and then we'll have X amount of unforeseen expenses or other additional things that we decide to do. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're always faced with choices. Do we do these things to keep the snowball running or do we not do them?
No, I think.
And do we do these additional things to make it function better? Do we not do them?
And I look at these things being constant, and we need to budget for them, and I don't see that happening. And so, I do, I want to approve new equipment.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, what is it here? $98, $96,800 for purchase of the 2013 Solar E900H and the 2014 Solar E900H. One for $46,900, one for $49,900.
A second.
Motion made the second discussion, Allison.
So, am I missing something? Just the only piece of information that we have about these units is just this first bullet point here. The 2013 Solar E900H for $46,900. Like, I mean, just looking at like the, the process that we normally use to acquire equipment, I, everything with that kind of a number has always so much more documentation with it. We go out to bid, we advertise, we have some kind of a quote from the entity that's selling it. I mean, it just, it does feel very, normally you would say, you know, this is the, this is how we could see that, you know, this was the price here and this was the price here. And I know that at some point, we just have to sort of trust the recommendation of department heads, but it does. Thank you, Steve. And I'm generally really inclined to do that, but it, normally when you buy something, even something used, there's, you know, some, it comes with a 90-day blah, 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 or, you know, just something that says, you know, like a, a quote from a, you know, you can go to any car dealer and they'll give you, they'll write it down on a piece of paper and say, this is what we're guaranteeing.
Yep.
So, I, this not being my field, it does feel uncomfortable, and it would be easier to make a decision like this if we had some documentation that says, we looked at these, you know, three options. You could buy a brand-new one for, you know, this amount. Like, what does a brand-new one cost?
$105,000. And I have all of that documentation. I am happy to send you the emails from the company if you'd like them. Basically, what they provided me with is the year, the hours that have been used. Again, one of the units is the one that we've had for the past two to three seasons, so we know it very well. Every year, the, the company comes and services the, all of our, even the rental ones, all at once. It's, it's normal, typical business. We have Tom Hedstrom's crew come out and, and direct wire it into the electrical system. It has to be done every year. You know, there, it's just part of it. And I do have lots of documentation I'm happy to forward on to you.
I mean, and it's, it just normally, some of that, just having some sort of statement, like, this is in good working order, or.
Maybe we can have all of that in the budget.
I don't think I would recommend it if it wasn't in good working order.
Beth, this isn't about you personally. This is just a, like, this annoying municipal process kind of stuff that we go through that helps people that are not as educated about this be able to feel good about decisions. It's not a personal trust issue.
No, it's not at all, Beth. You've done a great job out there. This is all, this is all about the process. I think, yeah, more information would be helpful, not the least of which I add to that, what else is lurking, because I, I think we need to have that also. And that's, from that perspective, I feel very uncomfortable with. This, probably very wise expenditure, by the way, but I, I can't approve it. But anyway, any other comments?
No, I, I, no.
All those, any other comments? All those in favor? Close? Is that half a hand?
Very torn about this. I, it's probably not that consequential. I think we could probably wait two weeks and.
So, no.
Yes, no.
[laughing]
Really torn about it.
I feel torn too, but, and that's why I'm opposing doing it now, because.
I would like to have a whole discussion about the snowball and have it all laid out and, and then feel good about it, but I will feel very stupid if it gets.
This is more about process.
You lose the opportunity in two weeks.
Beth has never brought anything to us that was done, it was, it was poor. I'll say that as a fact. She never has, and I have infinite trust there. But I think there's a bigger issue here about going forward and, and seeing what's out there. And, yeah, maybe a little bit more information we can do with that on the ninth also about these compressors and why this, because I'm, the only thing that confuses me, and I don't want to get into Beth's management, it's her job to buy these compressors or, we can't, you know, lock them in for rentals, if they get, somebody else paying more for the rentals than we are?
Right, but that's what I need to understand.
You know, that's, that's what I need to understand. Why, why, why we're having an agreement and they say, I'm sorry, we don't have any for you.
Well, it's because.
Because it's supplied the van and.
Well, the people that, you know, they're just not turning them back in like they usually do. The construction season's going year-round.
Right, okay. That, that would make sense. That's the kind of information I would want to want to hear.
They have no inventory, basically, so that's what's in the inventory.
Let's, let's close it up.
And Beth has an opportunistic approach, saying, guys, these are available now.
And no matter which way you vote, it isn't going to move, because it's going to be two, two, or three, one.
That's comforting.
[laughing]
So, I'd just be like a Susan Collins, kind of. My vote doesn't matter anyway. All right.
Let's, let's, let's attack this hard on the ninth, please.
But also, let's keep our, you know, eyes open for, ears open for the approval from the agency.
Grant, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And move with alacrity.
All right. Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
Hang in, Beth. Last item on the action list is the, we have apparently, I guess we have a demolition permit, request in the town and per ordinance, revised ordinance recently. And last year or so, we have this demolition review by the Historic Resources Committee. So, the action here is to discuss and the Historic Resources Committee addressing this issue.
Where is, is the demolition permit itself included in the packet?
What's being, why not?
Because you're not reviewing it tonight. You're just appointing members of a group that will be.
Oh, we're appointing members, the, the temporary membership that will, people, how many, so how many people do we need on this commission?
Well, it says five members and three alternates.
And it's listed in our packet, I believe.
So, yeah.
I'm guessing what I'm trying to get to is, what's the hurry?
Would be three.
There's 120-day time on it.
And when does that start?
Probably, when was the permit date? Do you have any idea, Audrey, roughly, last week or two?
Oh.
It's probably at least two or three weeks.
From what I understand, this needs to be done early May.
I would think so.
So, why would that be?
You've only got 120 days.
Because of our ordinance.
You've got 120 days in the ordinance. And at, at the 121st day, the owner person can go demolish with a permit.
Well, from what I understand, the portion of it, and this, like I said, this is just from what I understand, the Historic Resources Review needs to be completed by early May.
Okay. No matter what it is, it's pretty urgent. I agree with you, because even 120 days goes by pretty fast.
Yeah, I just.
I don't know, I don't want property. I know nothing about it.
I don't want them to, I'm just, we're, people are going to have questions about this, and I am wondering what they're going to be told in terms of what their deadline is, because if it needs to be finished by May, that doesn't make sense in terms of the timeline. That would suggest that the demolition permit was received a while ago and.
Like six weeks ago.
I don't, I just don't know. It would make it so much easier if we had, because, and the reason that I'm asking is because other people are interested in the Historic Resources Committee and not necessarily about this, you know, this one issue, but if we're appointing people.
We're appointing them on an interim basis.
Right.
To address this specific issue.
Right.
And my understanding is that we're appointing people whose term have expired, so they already have the expertise of the Historic Resource Committee.
Oh, yeah, no, and I know, they're both really great, and they both actually helped with the ordinance itself, and it's nice of them that they're willing to do this. I'm just also curious about the process and, because the timeline isn't adding up to me that it would be.
No, I think you're right.
And it's not fair to them to say, because I was really involved in crafting the ordinance, and it was supposed to be a sort of a meaningful thing, and the purpose of it is that it triggers this waiting period where at the end, anybody can ultimately do whatever they want to their property, but it is sort of a community conversation a little bit, that it gives the Historic Resources Committee a chance to say, hey, have you thought about doing this or have you thought about doing this? And sometimes people just haven't really thought about it and appreciate the kind of expertise that might come from a conversation like that. But it's a very different thing if we've received the application and then been sort of sitting on it, and then at the end, we're saying, okay, Historic Resources Committee, you have to do this thing that's kind of just a rubber, they, it really wasn't, it's not supposed to be a rushed thing, because the whole purpose of it.
120 days.
Is to make it, the conversation be at the beginning of that 100 days.
But, but.
120 days. So, I'm.
But we're, we're, we're at this time, this point in time, so.
We don't know at point, or, I'm, I'm using this.
I know where, I know where we're at now. They have next week to hold the public meeting. Or, sorry, the week after next. Next week or the week after next.
Why, why did we sit on the application for that long?
I can't answer that question.
So, that's what it, we're, what we're asking them to do is to not engage in like a, a meaningful.
Can I say something, Beth, there?
Which still isn't.
Just two weeks more, yeah.
Well, if they had it more than that, if the deadline is going to be. Well, even if it was supposed to be on the last week's agenda.
They missed the deadline. They missed that, but, but it's a matter of record when they request the permit. That date is someplace in our records. We know that. I think we should know what that date is.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter. We received it when we received it. We have an ordinance saying when we have to review it by.
120 days.
And you just need to get a committee together to review it.
Well, it sounds like they'll have one day to look at it. One meeting.
It just wasn't, it wasn't the idea, and I'm, I'm, I just don't understand why.
Well, we can't change that now.
We can't change that.
We can't change the past.
We, I think, I think.
It needs to come with some sort of an apology to the committee then. I would just like to know the, it would be much easier if we had this application in here, and then we would know the facts, and we would be able to.
That's not part of what your job is. Your, your job is getting a committee together to review it right now.
I don't, I would, I, I agree.
It was received on April 5th. That's when the application was received.[1750.03] It was received on April 5th. That's when the application was received.
April 5th?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not due in May?
Yes, it is. We have 30 days from when we receive the application for the Historic Resources Committee to review it.
On my recollection, it was 120 days.
That's, that's the actual...
That's how long they have to wait before they can...
They can start demo.
Do the demo.
Okay.
We have 30 days, okay.
So there will still be time after they've reviewed it before they...
They have time to review it, and, okay, that's all, that's all I'm asking.
So, so it didn't make it on time to the original, two weeks ago, because we received it on the 5th?
No, that's, that's fine.
That's fine, that's...
That's fine.
As long as it wasn't received a few months ago.
It's only 14 days. I thought, I, like, I think Allison's, maybe, but I'm not, words in her mouth, but I thought that they submitted it in March.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm getting the timeframe from you, like, in real time now, as to when everything was submitted and when we need to have...
Okay, that makes...
Now, so now to the committee, who do we appoint to do this task?
Well, there's a few people that I believe have, they've, they've agreed to be reappointed on an interim basis. They don't want to serve a full three-year term.
I see, I see.
Just for the purpose of reviewing this application.
So, and the interim basis would be until the 120 day expires, right?
It could just be for this...
This task.
This task.
Okay, yep, okay, cool.
And they are Chris and Patricia?
Chris Fasselt and Pat Scaling.
Yes, and then Rosalie and Eileen are not expiring until...
Oh, I see. Ms. Glass and...
Their terms.
Later this, later sometime this year.
We need five, right?
So, that's one, that's four. Anybody else? I guess there's nobody, there's only one other person.
Four, I mean, four would give us a quorum, and they're the ones who've come forward, so we'd be fine, if it's just those two.
I know a few people that are interested also.
So I'll make a motion that we approve Chris Fasselt and Patricia Scaling for reappointment to the Historic Resources Committee.
I second.
Are perfect people to do it, too.
Did Beatty Parker also put in? Okay.
All right. Motion made, and seconded. Any other discussion? Alls in favor? Fast hands, 4-0. Thank you very much. At the end of the action items, the discussion items we have is, one, which is the recently published report by our harbor committee on the task we had asked them to look at, which was the uses and evaluation of steamboat landing.
Yes, and Josh, thank you for staying so long. So first, I want to thank the harbor committee for their work, because they did an extensive work looking at the history of the, of steamboat landing, at the usage, at the issues. We've had many conversations, and I think this report is really, a really good report with a lot of recommendations for the select board, both on a short-term basis and a long-term basis. And I would, Josh, if you wouldn't mind give us a, coming up and giving us a little synopsis. Since you stayed that long, I can't, I just...
Not in my pajamas yet.
You're not in your pajamas yet.
You're too young, Josh.
Yes, I agree. I really loved reading the report, and it was just really helpful. Thank you.
Well, excellent. Well, I don't know about a synopsis, but...
A summary, like...
Yeah, we tried to, we did try to look at sort of all of the, the uses that are going on, things that are working well, things that are maybe not working quite as well, and, and trying to look into the future for where things, where problems might be on the horizon. Certainly breaking it down into its various elements, the ramp being sort of the largest one, but also the dock itself, where boats tie up on a short-term basis, and storage for the dinghies. And then we felt like we had to look at the parking and access to the facility, because I think from the land side, you can't really look at it without considering those items. As Sophie said, we, you know, there's some fun history. I love the history side, so we did have to look at that. But then the, really looking at the infrastructure, and Steve's here, and can correct me if I've, if I've missed anything. This, one thing that we did want to get across is that this facility, though it is aged, it's 20 some odd years old now, it has done a great job, actually, in those 20 years, so it's by no means, it has no, by no means failed. It is needing increasing work over the years, and Steve will say, in the last few years, certainly the storms. I did go check it today, and I didn't see any slabs getting torn up in the storm today, but it could. So, it's, it's certainly, it's getting tired. So I think the time is right to, to look at it. You know, we, we tried to break it down by use, so the public, obviously, is the largest user. You know, people who launch, you know, boats maybe once or twice a year, you know, in the fall and the spring, but also people that take kayaks and lasers and all that kind of stuff. But also, there's a number of commercial users that use that facility, whether they're launching the boats, commissioning boats, or, or passenger vessels. There are a couple of passenger vessels who have used it in the past, off and on, so we wanted to include them as well. You know, problems, this was a lively one, because again, people were leery of me even saying that there's a problem there. But, you know, the ramp, I think we can all agree, the ramp is, is needing more and more work. It's not holding up to the storms like it has been and in the past, and the storms are getting more active. So, last fall was a vicious one for this ramp in particular. So Steve's had to do a lot of work to keep it going, and actually should be commended for, for keeping it going, because it's, it's getting pretty tough. The, the floating docks are challenging. I've been on the water quite, quite a long time, and, and I've had, I've struggled on that dock, walking on the dock, you know, when, when, when the swells really start going. It can get pretty wild out there.
One of the harbor committee members, no, it was, no, it's who, somebody, somebody has nicknamed it "The Worm."
"The Worm," yes. One of the commercial guys said he calls it "The Worm."
Undulating worm.
So, so that's just, you know, the dock itself. The dinghy dock is quite full now. You know, people talked about having to, I don't keep a dinghy out there, but others do, and they talked about having to kind of climb over several dinghies to get to their dinghy. So that gets a little, a little dodgy at times. But they're making do, you know, everybody, they learn how to lengthen a painter to get to their, you know, to, to set their boat out, kind of thing. There, you know, there is a 10-minute time limit out there. You're supposed to leave your boat for 10 minutes only, tied up at the dock, and people do exceed that at times. Another thing that the, that the committee wanted to really get across is that this is a really good group of people that use that. So, while that is a problem, because it's, you know, they're exceeding the limit, generally, people will move a boat, they'll, they'll be there, and they'll say, "Okay, let me help you, you know, get your boat situated," and kind of thing. So, it is, it is at, I would say it's at capacity, but they wanted to make sure that we knew that, you know, everybody is very helpful out there, and that's a vibe that they don't want to lose. And then lastly, the, the parking situation. You know, we've got this little municipal lot on Cove Road that most people don't even know about. It's pretty heavily overgrown, it's kind of like free-for-all, how you park there, if you have a car, or you have a trailer. So that gets a little, a little bit dicey. And like I said, there's not really any signage, and what, what there is, is pretty minimal. And then, as I said, increasing maintenance costs. We did want to talk about some of the other things that I think when we're looking at steamboat landing need to be considered, sort of big-picture stuff, some of them very, very big picture. One is Lyman Morse's proposal for a marina project off of steamboat landing. So I think that has to certainly come into, into play here and be, be a factor. The Army Corps, as you all know, is interested in a system of breakwaters in the outer harbor, on the ledges and off Dillingham Point. So that would have a direct impact on this, if that were to ever go forward. So I think that needs to be in there. The comp plan, whether or not you, you knew this, has a section where they talk about the state of Maine is interested in establishing, re-establishing ferry service, and therefore, steamboat landing would be a, they thought a viable location for a ferry terminal. We had a fairly lengthy discussion about that, actually, and it was quite unanimous that the committee felt that that was not actually a viable proposal. But it is something that the state has, has expressed an interest in, so I think it needs to stay on the, on the radar.
I think, yes, I agree with you, but I think the point is that steamboat landing, as it is today, would be completely inappropriate.
Oh, well, they would do stuff to it if they were, I mean...
I don't think that this is a realistic...
I know, it's, I know, we shouldn't have, we should never, you know...
We spent a lot of time on it, but I think because, because it does get mentioned in various things.
We're not going to tell them now, necessarily.
And it is in the comp plan, and I think because it's in the comp plan, we kind of have to respect that, and sort of say, "Well, I guess we do have to address it at the very least, recognize it." And then finally, the big one is the impact of sea level rise. You can't do anything in the harbor without giving some, some thought to that. And actually, as a result of this analysis, we have gotten one of our members on the Camden Yacht Club has started a sea level rise group, I guess, for lack of a better term, and there's been one meeting already. And so we have a member on that now. So that's, hey, we already did something, so there you go. So, short-term and long-term, we wanted to make sure that we gave you a couple of different levels of recommendations, and the first one certainly would be, keep, keep going as is with Steve and others maintaining this facility, because it actually does need somewhat daily and regular maintenance. So I think that's important, because it is such a useful tool and facility for the public. One that is both a long and a short term is to hire an engineer to actually look at this facility. We spent a long time saying, "Well, what could the dock configuration be? How would we do this?" And we just, like, you know, we're not, this is, this is going outside our wheelhouse here. So I think hiring someone to, an engineer to actually say, "What are the industry standards globally for something like this?" Not just looking even in Maine, because we did some research in Maine and found some comparable.
And globally is interesting, because there are some harbor infrastructure in Europe that, where they face much more dire weather, that, that are, their lifespan is not 20 years, it's 50, 70, 100. And so the issue is, if, we're going to need to rebuild steamboat landing at one point, the ramp, and the, because it's, you know, right now, we're doing Band-Aid surgery, basically. But next time we do it is to engineer it, to, use examples from Europe, you know, I'm thinking in particular of Nordic countries and even, you know, England, Scotland, and France, where we, we all face an Atlantic weather system, and the winds and the waves are much stronger there than they are here, to really build something that, that, once in my lifetime is enough, and probably too many. But that's what we need to be thinking about, building infrastructure for the long term, as long, as long as possible.
And for the record, we did have several volunteers on the committee to go to Europe, and no one would take us up on it, so. We didn't put in the budget request on that one. So anyway, I'm not going to read you each and every recommendation, because you can, you can see them. We did recommend that you consider, and I think this will probably be a good discussion point, a registration of some sort for the commercial users, because, you know, right now, it is a shared facility, and that's, that's what we, the committee, wanted to make sure that it stays, because it is this nice use of the public, you know, Joe and Sally launching their kayak or their, or their dinghy, but also commercial people putting boats in for, for the public, you know what I mean? So, we did feel like there should be some, maybe more record of that.
Be more specific on commercial uses.
Passenger vessels, any passenger vessels loading and unloading. Right now, that's not really recorded, if you will. There's no permitting that happens. There's no licensing. Haulers, commercial haulers, people who are paid to launch someone's boat that use that facility.
I see.
They don't, there's no record or anything like that.
I see, I see.
So that kind of thing.
And it can also span, in those cases, sometimes the boat stays longer than 10 minutes, because they're rigged.
All right, they might put it in and then put the mast up and...
Put the rigging, so they use, they use steamboat landing to do the rigging of boats that are being launched. So that's way beyond the 10 minutes, and the town doesn't get any fee for that.
Is it commercial, were you talking small, commercial, day-use boats, or are we talking about cruise ships?
Well, there have in the past been, the Lively Lady and the Periwinkle, I believe, has used, they serve the cruise ships. So, the cruise ships actually would bring people in via tour bus to Steamboat Landing Road, and they would offload the passengers from the tour bus, and then they would go out onto the dock, get onto the Periwinkle and the Lively Lady. I think are the only, those are the only two that I know of, at least recently. And then they would go off and do a harbor cruise, and, you know, lobsters and all that stuff, and then they would come back, you know, a couple hours.
And get on the bus and go back to Rockland.
And then get back on the bus and go back to Rockland or wherever. Yep.
So that's, that's really one of the issues we have to look into, because there's the parking issue, there's the loading and unloading of passengers on a dock that's frankly not ADA standard. So that's also something we might want to examine and make sure that it's safe for people, especially people of a certain age who usually are on those cruises, that they can use that dock without...
Right.
Risking, twisting an ankle, or whatever, you know.
Hurting themselves. Are the, are those, are the commercial use limited to just what you just mentioned about buses coming in, going for a cruise in a boat, and coming back, and that's it?
Those are all that we've, I've been identified at this time. And actually, you know, another commercial use, fishermen, there are some commercial fishermen...
Of course.
That use that facility.
We have no day sailor?
I did not identify any day sailors that use that. Nope.
Well, if, if the, if the buses are coming in from Rockland and being dropped off on day sailor boats, it is day sailing.
Well, it's a commercial passenger vessel, yes, so.
I mean, the terms on it, be careful, terms of use, one of those boats at least is, is a day sailor.
Yep.
Licensed day, no, it's actually not.
Not licensed.
Neither one, neither one.
A lively lady.
You say the lively lady?
Lively lady.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking of his other boat.
Yep.
We'd certainly rather have them going over there than having a tour bus come down to the public landing. I mean, there's a lot of traffic for the...
Yeah, but there's no, the issue is that there's no real parking for the tour bus.
Oh, no, there's, I mean, that's an issue for every...
No, but they stay there.
Oh, I, I definitely recognize the problem. I guess I just, I'd like to, I'd like to try to find solutions to that, because, you know, ultimately, we, I do think we want to welcome people to Camden and find a way, and every, you know, everybody that drives down to the public landing or drives, lots of people impact the use over there, and, you know, the tour buses are annoying sometimes, but are, you know, so are some...
But I think that's why there are specific zones in town, specific areas that are specifically for tour buses to load and unload, and that...
Nothing over in that area.
There's nothing in that area.
I'm happy to field questions about that on board.
Hi, Liz. Yeah, sure. Yes, she does. We can, certainly.
Order I want to...
Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
Could I ask the select board to assign a task to the harbor committee that...
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. That's essential, and that's where we're going with this, I think. We need to, there's, there's concerns we've expressed, and we know how it operates, and, and we also want to be careful we don't open up Pandora's Box. If somebody was using it commercially, and I don't hear that, by the way, for, you know, just, you know, if we, if we say yes to one, we have to say yes to all. We don't, as we sit here, we don't have a choice. So that's, I'm, I'm, as a select board member, I'm just curious, concerned about opening the floodgates, and that's what I think that the harbor committee needs to take a look at, is, is what, what, what we can and should allow, including the 10-minute limit thing. Why do we have a 10-minute limit? What's it for? You know, we're not enforcing it.
Also, it needs to be signaled better, or, or changed.
And that was one of the recommendations, was to actually enforce it and actually put up more signage, and, and have a little bit more monitoring, maybe have Steve or one of his deputies.
Question. Is a 10-minute limit workable? Is that, is that the best limit to have?
That's what is generally done at most boat launches. They, I mean, even at Bog Bridge, that's what they would encourage, to be less than that, even if...
Anything about it, I'm just curious, because there are so many examples there that it didn't work.
It's tough.
It kind of gets to the, you know, this is at its core, this is a ramp, this is really what this started as, as a launching ramp. And, and so it's really designed for someone to launch their boat, tie, you know, tie it up for a few minutes, park their trailer, and then go back and take their boat and, and go off. More than that.
So we should ask the harbor committee?
No good deed, reds, I'm sorry.
And do you want me to, to kind of spell it out?
Yes.
Because I feel like, yeah, we haven't exactly said what, what it is.
Yeah, we'd be specific, so the harbor committee doesn't do what we usually do with committees, and send them off on a, on a broad task without definition.
Yeah, so Liz and, Liz and Dom, who own a day sailor operation that operates from the public landing, have requested to use steamboat landing for another aspect of their business, which is, it's the Periwinkle, right, Liz? Just the Periwinkle?
Go ahead, Liz, yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, Liz can talk to you about exactly what they're doing, but...
That's why I was trying to drive that, was other uses.
I think, given, you know, given what they're doing, I didn't feel comfortable kind of answering that question.
No, you were right, you're right.
So I thought it needed to come to harbor committee and then the board for a final decision.
I'm very nervous. I've never done this before.
Well, you can start, you know, start off by singing.
Well, I know most of you.
Start off by singing. Sing your favorite song. No, Liz, just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Liz Joya, and me and my husband run, he's usually the one who comes, Tom, Dominic, and we run Camden Harbor Cruises. We have Lively Lady that has a day sailor permit, so we, at the public landing, and then we have Periwinkle that does not have a day sailor permit. So in the past few years, we had been running private charters out of steamboat landing that there was, which was within ordinance limits, and we've always tried to be transparent about what we're doing. We're not trying to sneak around doing these trips. We used to take the cruise ships out of American Cruise Lines. They have between 130, I think their biggest ship, I don't know exactly, it's, it's between 130, 150 people, something like that. They used to take the launches, they used to anchor in Camden, take the launches into the public landing, you know, hit a couple boats on the way in. It was a disaster. They would be late for getting on the Lively Lady, you know, it would cause congestion at the day sailor dock. So when we purchased Periwinkle to do charters, which, especially during COVID, there was a lot of need for charters, it was, you know, private trips. So, we said... So we said, well, let's bring them there. In our experience, yes, there are days that steamboat landing is busy. In our experience, there was like, oh, well, it's out of the way, there's not as much congestion, there is room, this is kind of getting them out of town a little bit. So last year, there were some problems, there were some folks who, and I, I do take responsibility for not being firm with the bus drivers and some of it was things that we didn't really know what was happening. So we had the buses, what should have happened is the buses would come, offload the passengers, we could take up to 19 people, so it's not a ton of people, and then the bus should be going, which didn't happen. Some of the bus drivers got very testy with us, it was, it was kind of, it wasn't ideal. If I had known that, you know, the, that it was going to cause a bit of an uproar, we would have been a little more strict. So when, I, I appreciate that people stood up and said, we don't like what's happening. I guess the, the bus driver, there's one specific bus driver, he was on a hot, sweltering day, he was running the bus with the AC, you know, and so we said, okay, we have to shove the buses off. Steve told us, you got to shove the buses, I said, oh, of course. So we said, you know, you can't, you can't just stay there with the bus running. So then, you know, in hindsight, I wish this had been nipped in the bud so we could have made a working way of doing this. So being in limbo is very, is a little difficult for our business, whereas, you know, we don't, we like, we love Camden, we love everything about Camden, we want, we like it over there, the people, you know, the 10 minute loading and unloading, I would say it's doable, 15 would be great, but, but I also agree with what he said, people are, oh, you got to come in, you know, we help each other, we move each other's boats around, it's, I don't think, I mean, I don't think, I don't think there's, or at least when I haven't been there, there hasn't been an issue with that part of it. I begged the cruise ship to get a smaller bus, I sat on my computer all night trying to find charter companies to get a smaller bus. It didn't, you know, they also dropped them off, I guess, at Village Green for the walking tour. So that, they said, well, no, we share them for the walking tour. So I, I felt my, my, I was a little exhausted from all my, I didn't, I was running out of options.
It's true.
I can't run, I can't drop them off at Village Green because I can't, they can't walk to steamboat and I can't run Periwinkle because I don't have a day sailor license. I'm happy to take one of those if you want.
No, but the issue, the issue is to have those buses drop them off and not stay there.
Yeah, and, and I'm, they shouldn't be.
And they could go park wherever they want and you have radios and cell phones and whatever, so it's really easy to call the bus and say, we're 10 minutes out, it's, that's not a problem. Because the issue is that I've seen those buses parked on the right hand side when you look at the sea and that's a condo and that's a parking entrance and that poor lady that lives on, in that unit, she spends her summer yelling at people. Because her access is covered, is blocked all the time.
I guess I, and, and I wasn't aware of that, so I'm here to want to remedy that. I have a captain and a crew that can, I mean, we're, we're getting, we're getting those folks down so we can go up there every time, I mean, we're there because we're taking them out, we can go up there every time and say, you need to head out now, we'll call you when we, or whatever works. So as for the insurance and liability, Sophie, that you were talking about on the worm, we probably aren't going to be taking them out, but, but then, but that is something we should explore. But we're usually there helping them if there's somebody who has.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but I think there's a whole, so, so the task we want to give the, so Liz, thank you so much, this is super helpful, by the way.
The one thing I had sent to Audra, I know you guys have much bigger fish to fry than this, but though, we do have a one on May 8th and my proposal was possibly, can we have somebody, can we try it that day and have somebody come down and see how we're doing it?
Are you talking, are you talking about a bus coming in?
No, we have, I'm supposed to, so I have a summer full of dates for the cruise ship and nowhere to run them out of, so.
Liz, the issue is that we don't want to prevent you from doing your business. I, I think, so for me, the issue is making sure that steamboat landing is a, is a public good and that the public still has access. And sometimes when commercial usage increases, the, the public may have the perception that, oh, it's always a hardship to go to steamboat landing or it's never a good time, so we really need to find ways so that, so that everybody can, can enjoy it. So the purpose is not to prevent you.
We enjoy it personally, I bring my kids down there to skip rocks, I get, yeah.
Audrey, you've been closest to the request, can you describe what you would charge the harbor committee with?
I would say the harbor committee's done quite a bit of work on this already, so you've got this report from them. They did a lot of work on the commercial passenger vessel agreements and.
Right.
One of, they did anticipate some commercial usage of steamboat landing.
Yep.
So I do think that if you task them with coming up with something a little more formal around the rules for, you know, commercial vessels that are going to use it and some sort of, what, you know, what do they recommend is, you know, capacity for the amount of commercial usage of that facility? I think that that would be really helpful for them to give that recommendation to you and then you can finalize it.
And the, as I recall, on the four, I think there were four, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, there were agreements that were drafted, one of them has never been used, which was a steamboat landing document, which is basically a license of sorts to use steamboat landing and because, yeah, that's, that's, that's the focus I see too, because our problem is, is if we allow one person to do something, we have to let everybody else do it at the same time, so we can limit the number, that's what the harbor committee has to look at. Allison, go ahead.
I mean, we could say it sort of in, in two different ways, if we let somebody, then we have to let everybody, but currently there, you know, if you look hard enough, there are many rules that might be being broken over there that we're not enforcing at all and we've made the decision to not enforce really anything over there. And so to choose to, you know, enforce one of the rules is also a decision. So I guess, I mean, I would.
I have felt frustrated being transparent and several different in, in Rockport, we, when we weren't allowed to be here, we talked to Abby in Rockport and, and she said, you know, come down here, we paid the fee to use it, and then we went to Rockport to be transparent and it wasn't a problem until we were transparent and, and so.
Right, so just, I mean, quickly, I think that, I mean, May, you have a little bit of an urgent issue.
So we have an urgency, I was hoping that, like, we have this May 8th date, can we?
Is it like, May 8th starts and then it's every day after that or is it?
No, you know, we, it's May 8th and then the next one isn't, I think there's a couple Sundays in a row and then, you know, at some point it becomes once or twice a week.
Because.
And I have a full schedule, but that one was kind of like one and then we have a week, at least a week grace period.
But, I mean, I would say I don't think the only issue is the how long they stay. I think that it's sort of the sensitivity of them back, I've been over there and, and sort of seen it happening and it's like they just back up and they back up and they back up and eventually I'm like, oh my gosh, kids, drag your kayaks out of the way. But which I think are things that could be solved, is, I mean, I would like to be able to say that we could, they could do it for this, you know, this, on this May 8th time and have the harbor committee monitor that or to say tonight, no, you can't do that until we have a full report from the harbor committee, I don't want to.
I don't think.
Make it a good opportunity for that to be monitored and watched to see sort of what the.
I think Audra's stating, there was a request made to her and she's just asking for, there was the board and the board's hearing, it should be, harbor committee, we need some input, we can't make a decision what we know tonight.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect the whole summer.
I'm not saying no to anything, you know, Audra and Steve can, can do what they want to do day to day, but they're asking for guidance, as I see it, in terms of setting perhaps a policy, perhaps enhancing what we have written already, whether it's 10 to 15 minutes, that's, that's a small part of it.
Yeah, and I mean, and I just don't want to put Liz and Dom in the position where, you know, we get, you know, where they're, where they're working on it, we're working on it and, you know, just in that timeframe between when we have something a little bit more formalized and, and then we get a complaint and it just kind of makes the whole thing fall apart. I just think it would be, it's better that.
Are you saying no until then?
No, 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 not at all.
Yes, until.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I just wanted to raise it now so that, that everybody knows that, you know, in, in the, in the short term, you know, I think Liz, Liz and Dom, they've learned enough from last season that I think they.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, I think we, you know, given the chance, I think there were a couple fairly isolated incidents, other than that, I, I think it's.
So I'm, I'm confident that we can make it work in this interim period, but just in case, I thought it was good to talk about it.
Oh, perfect, okay.
And say we're coming up with a, a longer term, more rigorous plan for how this is going to work.
I thought we were saying no until the harbor committee comes back with their report and I was just like, oh my God, okay.
Just in case something, you know, whatever could happen, so we can say, yep, we are, we are working on making this something that's sustainable on a ongoing, long-term basis.
Yes, and we want, we want Liz and Dom to know that.
I just bring this on you, I was, I was trying to figure out a solution and then all of a sudden.
And I mean, and Liz didn't, she didn't spring it on us, this is something they've been telling us this is going to happen.
One at a time, Mark.
I, I have a question that's not about your situation. One of the, one of the recommendations was getting an engineer to study the whole thing, where are we with that, that idea?
We're nowhere.
It's an idea.
So that's the thing that we should be thinking of as well, because from what I saw, the, the physical structure could be changed, it could be, they're reading the reports, it could be.
Yes, but I would say absolutely, but I would say you all need to revisit your priorities if you, it's a, that is a project.
It's big.
It is a big project.
It, it's big and, and all the, some of the projects that Josh mentioned, some of them, the breakwater is huge, that's absolutely huge and.
It's so huge, we've avoided it for the five years that I've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Sophie.
I'd like to add something and I'm gonna, I'm gonna minor what you said, I'm gonna modify what you said, because I do think that we need a long-term plan for steamboat landing, because Josh and I talked about it, very quickly, steamboat landing is going to become at capacity, if not, it's, we're already there almost. So right now, we're going to do a status quo so you can keep using it, we're going to put those rules in place for, for a short period of time, but we really need to add steamboat landing to our priorities and, and, and start planning for the future, if only for one reason, that steamboat landing needs to keep up with what Lemon Morris is going to do.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and we can use, you know, we're updating the, no, we're updating the.
No, I agree.
Well, and I'd also.
There's a lot of things we need to do to improve the harbor infrastructure, the, the access, the number of boats we get to come in and things like that.
It's not just the infrastructure upgrades there too, it's the manage, it's the long-term management of it. You know, there are certain things that we could commit to from an infrastructure standpoint that are going to require ongoing, you know.
This is an.
Management and staff and all these other expenses associated with it.
This is an elephant we're not going to eat tonight, so I think what we're going to have to look at is just, I agree, we can discuss it during priority, absolutely, we, I agree, we shouldn't have Steve and company putting chewing gum and tape on things forever, but on the other hand, you know.
And we can't expect, you know, Steve at his current sort of staffing levels to be able to, you know.
Monitor.
Monitor and manage steamboat landing to a certain level.
Department can do it with cameras.
Good idea. Anyway, thank you Liz, thank you very much.
So you have what you need to do.
So it sounds like it will be, we can continue to use it, we're gonna, I, I'll email you, get some real firm guidelines on what we need to do on our end. I appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thank you. Josh, is it clear?
Yeah, I guess. I would just like to get a little more guidance on exactly what you're asking the committee to do.
Good boy.
I heard.
Keep everyone happy.
Look at this, keep everyone happy, right, do what we can. So are you saying you'd like us to develop a set of policies for commercial passenger use of steamboat landing? Or are you?
Well, fundamentally goes like this, if one entity is allowed to use it, why can't three others, four others? How are we going to control that?
Some due location.
My question is, are you allowing someone?
We need some control.
Right.
I don't care what's been done to date, we're talking about going forward, my perspective, that if you allow exaggeration, one, it's up using day sailors because that's Liz and company, but if one windjammer, a small windjammer, one small windjammer wants to load there, are we going to allow that? You know, that's, I believe that's why the, the steamboat landing license was created, was to control that activity out there, because from my, my perspective, sitting here, if I allow one entity to use that, then I've got, I might, I feel obliged to let everybody else use it too. That has to be limited.
Right, I mean, I, I would have to look, but I do believe that the steamboat landing was another addendum, because we had.
It was.
You have to have a, you do have to actually have a license to carry passengers in the town and then that was the.
You're correct, you're correct, and maybe, maybe, maybe we need, you guys.
So I guess that's my question, do you need part one to do?
I would say similar to, you know, like at the public landing where you have a set amount of licenses you issue.
Exactly.
I think that that's one of the things that would be helpful for them in making a decision is some sort of recommendation on, you know, what the harbor committee would see as, you know, like a, a good, and I, I mean, and I know that's difficult because we're, you know, you're never going to know until you go through a season and see what happens, but I think maybe as a starting place, having the harbor committee provide that recommendation to you, that would be helpful.
I agree.
And I think, you know, just some other, given the limitations of the infrastructure that's down there, you know, just general guidelines of what would be appropriate, given what we have and what it can handle at this, at this point in time.
What, what if any additional licenses should be granted for, for use now of steamboat landing? So you could be expanding the number of commercial passenger licenses.
That's a possibility, at least, at least we have a mechanism like we do with day sailors, we're, we're authorized to allow up to seven, up to seven on the landing. Well, I think you're right, that steamboat was an addendum and maybe it doesn't need to be an addendum, maybe it needs to be separate, I don't, this would, we need to, the harbor committee to take a look at, but all uses and what should be charged for uses, all uses, for commercial especially, you know, if somebody's launching boats there to do fit up.
That happens all the, there's so much of this that happens that I worry about, it would also be good maybe if the harbor committee could just evaluate a little bit whether.
Resource.
Well, whether, like, what things would make sense to regulate and what things might be best not to, I mean, how big of a, we don't need to be a, you know, going in search of a problem and how many, you know, how much resources does it take to regulate something? Are we going to have somebody chasing down, you know, Walt when he launches a boat there or, I don't know how big these problems are.
So it's interesting, you're talking about stuff, though, right now, currently, the, the set of rules we have for the entire launching ramp is that, it's one short paragraph that I've worked with for the past 20 years. I added something and I think I gave it to you, do you remember? So I, I added this, it's pretty short, I'll read it to you, this is, this would go in section five, right after, right after what it says, I can read this to you currently.
Steve, I don't, I don't want to go into, into changes, this is what we want the harbor committee to take a look at, to recommend to us for, to make changes, so that input needs to go to.
Yeah, so start with that and see if that's.
Good, this is a quick little thing, adding to this to give a little tease and then he can, they can move it to wherever they want.
And whatever else you determine is necessary, that's what we have the harbor committee for.
Good, good.
Thank you.
I mean, the other thing is, we also have all these other public access points that have been completely neglected and abandoned and so, I can't, I can't wait, but some, you know, at some point, we can solve maybe some of the steamboat landing problems by creating opportunities in some of our other.
Excellent, yeah, good.
Thank you, Steve, thank you. All right, is that clear enough, Audra?
Yeah, no, I mean, and this is more for you because ultimately, it's going to be the board that's making the decision.
Ray, you want to make a quick comment, please?
A couple of quick things, all right, because I live right near steamboat landing.
Do, yes. On Cove Road. And just wondering, you mentioned about the parking area on Cove Road and that's really a free for all. It is.
Oh, yeah.
This past year, and I think it's gonna increase, keep on increasing, there're gonna be more vehicles, and I'm talking with trailers and everything, out on Cove Road and up to Erie, almost all the way up to Erie, and that's gonna wind up being a safety issue at some point in time. I don't know, have a solution at all. I totally agree, you're right.
Sometimes it's not even trailers and stuff, it'll be just like commercial vehicles that are parked there for days and days as like vehicle storage.
But they have no, no place else to go. I understand that.
Your second point?
Second thing is, and it's improved in the last couple of years, but I walk out there frequently, out onto the, the worm, and the number of dinghies out there tied up that don't have a permit.
Oh.
Is always an issue, but it's been, it's improved. It's been much better this past year. I don't even know what to do about that. I mean, you know, what can you do? I mean, you're not gonna be able to get over there every day to take a look at it, but that's one. And the third thing is, steamboat landing may, I'm just gonna say this, okay? Steamboat landing may be the only piece of open-town property that doesn't have any kind of a trash receptacle on it.
Oh, good point.
And. Good point, Ray. And it's so confined in area, you don't have anything there, but it's something you could consider. Thank you, thank you, Ray. Thank you all. We're gonna move on. Thank you, Josh, all the hard work.
Thanks, Josh.
Now, we gave you some more hard work.
We'll work together on this.
All right. Onto our reports. Audra, do you wanna make any reports?
I do. So I just wanted to put this out there again, that if anybody who hasn't signed up for TextMyGov, I'd, I'd just like to encourage them to do so, because we're hoping that it would just be a more efficient way of notifying people who have an interest in, you know, it could be emergency alerts about, Stephanie Smith brought this up in an email to the Select Board that I was included on.
Yeah.
You know, emergency alerts, if we have to close a road down because of flooding, or, you know, we wanna send out notice of a meeting or an agenda that's been posted, you know, snow bowl updates in the winter, parking bans, that sort of thing. I think that that's, it's gonna be a really good way for people to get proactively notified by the town, but they have to do their part and sign up for it. So I'd really like to encourage everyone to do that if they haven't already.
Through our website, correct?
Yes.
The town website, it's free.
Yeah.
And we could also alert people and ask everybody to keep the drains, the storm drains, when we have those rains, so, yeah, and it's very cool. Sign up for it, yes.
So the next, another thing to consider, John Burke, who is the consultant that did our paid parking study, or that parking management study, he's recommended that we consider a pilot project for the public landing, which is something that was studied and discussed years ago, but I think, given, you know, the technology with kiosks and, you know, opportunity, like, it's just much more improved from, you know, what was available back when it was discussed 15, 20 years ago.
Oh.
And he's got an idea of how we could sort of make a pilot project work, and I think that that would, you know, give everybody in town a good idea of.
Taste.
What's that?
A taste.
Yes, absolutely. So, that might be something that we wanna discuss at an upcoming Select Board meeting, and John, I'm sure, would be happy to come and explain.
Absolutely.
How it could work.
Absolutely.
They have him on Zoom also.
Yep, yeah. It would be a low-cost way to try to get an idea of whether or not we wanna pursue this on a town-wide basis.
Okay.
We just had a meeting with MDOT today about the Route 1 South, so the Quarry Hill to Maritime Farms sidewalk, as well as the 105 sidewalk from Matthew John to Shertail Point. So, that, I, I'm sorry to say, it's an MDOT-managed project, so we're, we're not getting really firm dates on when they're starting, what they're doing, when they're doing things, when they're going from one location to another. It's tentatively scheduled to begin on June 1st. They're gonna try to do as much drainage work as possible on the Route 1 South section of the project, because the drainage portions of both these projects are what's going to cause, you know.
Destruction.
Flagging and, and, you know, that kind of components of the work, so they wanna get as much done on Route 1 South as possible, and then when it gets to be busier here because of the high season, they'll move to one, they'll move up to 105. But they wanna get, I think that they wanna try and get the drainage laid for Route 1 before the 4th of July.
Ooh.
That's their goal, so that when, you know, the sidewalk crew can take over and they don't need to close down any travel lanes.
Sure.
I don't know if that's gonna be possible. They've had a hard time ordering materials.
Aggressive.
There's just, it's a lot of unknowns around that, I'm.
Very aggressive.
Really quick.
Just wanna give everyone the heads up, we're going to be.
We've been waiting for this for so long.
Yes, we have.
It's exciting, let's not discourage.
Well, no, but I just wanna give everyone the heads up, that there're going to be a lot of answers that people want from the town that we're just not going to have.
Yeah.
One thing that we do wanna do in advance is send out notice as soon as possible to people on that portion of 105, that if they need to repair or replace their sewer laterals, now is the time to do it. And the town can help out with that through, you know, assistance programs that we have, so.
How are they gonna know? Can we offer like camera services?
That's, that's the thing, I don't, you know, it would have to be people who already know there's an issue.
Yep, and I don't know how you know that.
They only know that if it's one of those issues that backs up, rather than one of the issues that just lets sewage go into the river.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what was my next update? That's all the big stuff.
Di testing. I was gonna say di test.
Yeah, that's a tough one, they usually don't know there's a problem unless they have a problem.
Right. But I mean, if anybody's sort of holding off on fixing it, now's the.
Yeah, now's the time to do it. Thank you, Audra. Select Board, Allison.
Um, yes, I'm gonna share my screen real quick here.
You got it? There you go.
Um, mirror. Okay, mirror. And, okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, the.
Cleanup.
Yes, the Leonard Luckner Memorial Cleanup for Earth Day is coming up on, this Friday and Saturday. There is, if you go on the town website, you can click on a link that will take you to this spreadsheet here, and you can sign up for a road section, or, or a parking lot, or a little neighborhood, and then meet at Hannaford, either at 9:00 in the morning on Friday or Saturday, and get your vest and pickers and all of that stuff, and a road assignment if you don't already have one. You can email me if you have questions. What's that?
You mean?
I haven't, did I give you a road assignment?
Yeah.
No, you can choose your own road. People get actually, really, a little territorial about that, and we actually had a little bit of an argument last year of like miscommunication, somebody already cleaned Pearl Street, and so if you, somebody already got your road, don't worry, there are many roads that need to be cleaned, and they can be cleaned year-round. So then, this was from April, we've had a couple storms impacting us in different ways. This was April 10th. It was supposed to be about 3/4 of an inch, so I like monitor closely all the time and thought, oh, no, this isn't gonna be a big deal at all. We ended up getting about 3 and 1/2 inches of rain, a very short period of time. Most people I show this to can't figure out where this is.
I can't.
Because it looks so.
I can.
Different. So, this is Little Daily Brook. It's one of the few native trout-supporting streams, and it's, you know, just this little mountain brook that runs down, and there had been, I, I've read in old Camden Herald stories of Route 1 overtopping and being completely washed out because of this brook, and I didn't believe it. And finally, this time, I said, oh, I guess I can kinda see. So this, you know, it turned the, this field here on the other side into like a real lake.
Yeah.
You can see, this is an example of why we like people to keep things, you know, away from the river, because these, what happened is these hay bales, we did get those, started to, they traveled down, you can see some already made it, and this culvert is very, very small, and that's, of course, a DOT road, that would be a good candidate for doing some things. This is up on Lime Rock Street, another one of our brooks that comes into the town, that's, into the harbor that's buried, actually, in most places. We're having a lot of, a lot of problems on Lime Rock Street, actually. This is just a little bit of coming off of one of Camden subdivisions. This is where the stream goes underneath, underground, down Lime Rock Street, then it comes over onto Jacobs Ave, and you can see it emerges a stream again, and it goes through some culverts, and then it comes down. This is Belmont Ave, where it frequently overtops, and then it comes down Fry Street, completely buried again, and then comes underneath the Lock, Old Lock Marina where the condos are, and obviously having all kinds of problems there. Oh, so that is one of our other water-related problems from too much stormwater getting into the sewer system. This is a really frequent area where we have sewer overflows. This is more severe than we normally see it at Eric's Barbershop. This is not caused by the McInnacook River, in this case, but another little brook that we've buried, which comes down from the Camden Bog Property, down behind the Pearl Street Backyards, and then it goes underground up in a parking lot, up above, and just, it's just too small of a pipe. And so, it runs all the way down here and ends up going there. It's trying to, you know, all that water's trying to get into the, into the McInnacook River, though. So as, you know, you think about solving all of these drainage problems all over town, where people say, oh, no, we need a bigger pipe here, we need a bigger pipe here, you know, that all has to go into the river, underneath the Bagel Cafe, in this case, where we don't have much capacity. Tannery Lane Sewer overflowing. This is Ross and Ave, coming down from some of our subdivisions here, and this isn't in the, in the, even the 100-year flood zone. So it's just one of these brooks that has gotten bigger and bigger as we've added more and more water to it, causing all kinds of problems. But Ross and Ave is overtopping like more and, and more than this, you know, of course, is where it all ultimately has to drain to. And so when you talk about like, you know, one of the reasons that MDOT had to put that terrible pipe down, that it just can't stand, that goes down the harbor alleyway there, they drilled through bedrock to get their new pipe down there, and everybody said, what the heck are you doing? Why would you do that? Why not just let, put the downtown drainage into the river there? And one of the reasons for that is that there's just, you know, not enough capacity there. So when, you know, all the water ultimately has to go somewhere, this is, of course, the lake. Couple days before this, we were getting complaints about the lake being too low.
Is it old?
Yep. You know, some people thought this was, oh, this is perfect now. You know, actually, it's, you know, it's really not perfect, because it does, it does cause problems. When the, when the lake is, you know, consistently flooding, it causes septic problems, you know, all kinds of problems with runoff, with fertilizer. So then, today, we had a storm also.
Before you go to today, I also saw it, and I forgot to take pictures, but on Chestnut Street, the, the lot, almost at Chestnut Hill, that's vacant, there's, there's always water there, it's like a pond, and there's a.
Bringing us this great service, yeah.
Yes, thank you, but now it's over, it has overflowed, and it was coming down Cedar Street, I mean, it's everywhere.
There's just the water, just, when it spread out, we can handle it, but when it's that fast, it's, and so, you know, looking at different places that the town, over the years, might be able to even acquire in terms of, you know, continuing to have that as like a stormwater sink, you know, if that, if that lot on Chestnut Street gets developed, that's, you know, a lot more water, of course, that. So anyway, then we have some different types of problems, but also water-related. I was kind of shocked today a little bit to see the degradation down at, at Harbor Park, just a lot of, this was just fixed here, and, whoops, I've got things a little bit out of order there, but, so this, this, of course, is the Yacht Club, which is just getting hammered. That was over on, Lehman Morris isn't really in such bad shape, but that was a good view for like Yacht Club. This is one of our harbor access points here. This shows Sherman's Cove. You know, this wasn't even like a really, really high tide, this was just today, it was a little after, you know, it was a 10.6-foot high tide or something.
Love surge.
And each time that we have these more vertical walls that get put in, that really does redirect energy to other parts of the harbor. This is the Yacht Club, and this is a huge decline in, I, I, just a couple months ago, I was there, and it wasn't nearly so bad.
Yep.
So this is, you know, these vertical walls, this was all infilled in our tidal zone. I mean, this, it really struck me today that, like, there really is a huge cost to not addressing this stuff and not having sort of designs ready to go and pretending like it's just gonna last forever. So, this just, you know, this was after all, the action had died down a little bit, but it, when the wind blows from the east, it, it makes a really big difference.
Northeast.
So.
Northeast, yeah.
Well, the northeast isn't good either, the southeast isn't good, but, you know, anything east.
Surges.
So, that is.
Oh, thank you.
That.
Thank you, dear. Mr. Ratner.
I only have two things. On Friday, I received a text message from the town, because I signed up for the new system, Camden Main, a new Select Board meeting agenda has been posted. I received that at 9:13 on Friday morning, and Friday at 11:19, I got Camden Main, for updated information and upcoming elections, please visit, and it gives you a website, so you can register or whatever, and this page will be updated when sample ballots are available. So I'm getting the town notifications, and it's great.
One of those. I didn't get the one about the Select Board agenda.
Me neither, and I signed up like two weeks ago.
I got the one about the election information.
Did you have to sign up for each group? It's not.
Ah.
You're only like the Camden.
Yeah, you have to read, you have to read the directions, Sophie.
No, I did, I didn't see the.
It's a thing on Facebook. It's like.
So, it's, it's great, it's great to get it. It's, I, thank you for all the hard work that's gone into it, but it's, it's wonderful.
Is that it? Miss Sophie.
I have a couple things. The, the town of Rockland recently passed a resolution to not mow until May, to protect bees and pollinators and all kinds of people, and I can only urge people who live in Camden and to, don't clean your yard just yet. We need bees and pollinators, and if you can also wait a little bit until you mow, for the same reason that we need to preserve those, those species. But I also wanna tie up this conversation to what Allison was saying. One of the ways to, to avoid those runoffs that we have is to plant, to have plants with long roots. So lawns are, don't have long roots typically, they wash up really quickly and they get overwhelmed really quickly. So, when we start thinking about climate change and how it affects our environment and, and what we can do as just, you know, civilians and, and ordinary people, thinking about what we do with our lawns, when we mow them, what type of plants we put in, is, it's, it all participates to, you know, either aggravate it or make it just a little bit less dramatic, so, just my PSA, probably. Save the bees.
That's fine, Sophie. That's fine, Derek.
I mean, and are there things that the town Parks and Rec Department could do to, I'm sure they'd be happy to be told not to mow for a little while.
Sure they would.
Are there opportunities that they could look forward to?
May's not a big mowing month, to me, for my, not at all.
I've heard of mowing already in my neighborhood.
Not me, not me.
Maybe we could commit to no leaf blowers for town, for the town, or the, that's what I really hate.
That's a decision that you can make, operationally.
I don't know if you want it to be an operational decision. Well, I don't know if I want it to be an operational decision.
Oh, okay.
I, I feel like that is genuinely a policy, a statement of policy. I, I feel like that is genuinely a policy, a statement of policy. If you want a no-mow May and we don't, you know, we don't mow public property until June.
June 1st. Yeah, whatever.
I wouldn't want to, to tell the cemetery committee what to do, because I don't feel-
Well, you can't.
Right, exactly. Or I wouldn't want them to think that we thought that we could tell them what to do.
You can't, but I mean, we do have parks that we mow that-
It's true.
Yeah.
It's true.
Right. I mean, maybe if they could look into the viability of-
Yeah, right now, it's just a suggestion coming from me.
Oh, it's very viable. It's just a matter of-
I know it's viable because I do it very consistently.
There are related, there are related issues to lawns, though, including trimming and cutting down fruit trees, which, all kinds of buds and all kinds of, which attract more bees to my property than any, any, well, I don't have any.
Cutting down fruit trees, the town cutting down fruit trees?
No, people do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
People do, they trim them, because you're supposed to trim fruit trees, apple trees, and, and, you know, those blossoms, or I can tell you how many bees I get in my house around the, on the apple trees when they bloom. It's huge. It's much bigger than the yards, the grass stuff. Much bigger.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but I mean, it's, it's all, it's all about, you know, I have fruit trees, I have all kinds of herbs and good stuff, yummy stuff for bees, and-
Yeah, me too.
And nothing makes me happier than my yard.
Yeah, it keeps me awake at night.
Yes.
Anyway.
Anyway, that was, that was my, oh, and the other thing, if I may, also-
Yes.
I, I've noticed also a lot of people, and I'm super happy to see a lot of people walking in Camden, and again, I, I often see people with, pushing child carriages and things like that on the wrong side of the road.
Oh.
And really, facing the traffic can, can literally save your life.